So until the Chair calls upon you for your item of business. We will turn off our video feed until it's time to present. I can turn off your video feeds for you, but then I have to give you permission to turn them back on.
Recording in progress.
Are we good to go?
They hear you.
Just stop the video button. Yes, thank you, Chair. We're good to go.
Okay, well, welcome to our special meeting of Committee of Directors for June the 4th, 2025. And I acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional and ancestral territory of Flommin Nation. Directors, you have an agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to your agenda? Seeing none, a motion is being approved. Director Gisborne, Director Elliott, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry. There are no minutes, so we move right on to delegations. We have four registered delegations. And the first one is Tom Reed. Tom, if you're there, welcome. You want to speak to us? You might be muted. They're not hearing you. Tom, are you there? Tom Reed?
Hey, Tom Reed, you there?
Are you muted?
Mr. Dever, put his hand up.
They're not hearing you.
Chair, if I may. Here I am. Okay.
I see him now.
Can you, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
No? Oh, good. Okay. Well, I'm sorry I'm late. I could not find the link and I asked, had to ask the staff and I'm sorry for the delay. My apologies.
No worries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Do you want me to ju- jump in right now?
Yeah, jump in right now. You have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I hope to use a lot less than that. What I want to talk about is the solid waste management bylaw proposed. And I want to set out four reasons for carving out an exemption for TCSADA on salvage and reuse. And the first reason is that the Regional District has a policy which supports salvage and reuse. And there was, uh, the most recent affirmation of that policy was an award, national award just given to the Regional District. I'm sure you're all aware of. And I want to quote from the press release on the Regional District website, which says, "This facility includes a recycling and reuse center, organicx program, or get ocean plastic depots, scale house, and waste transfer station." And then it says a little further down, "Using a recycle-first approach, the RRC features salvaged materials creatively repurposed by local builders and artists." So that's one indication of the policy, which is a great policy. And then I also want to quote briefly from the the, uh, Community Sustainability Charter, which says that, um, hang on a sec. There we go. Um, this was passed in 2010, the Regional District Board, the City of Powell River, and Clummin Nation. And although it's not a binding document, it does set forth a direction for policy and for government operations. And here's the quotes from page 11. This is the Sustainability Charter goal page. Quote, "Reduced consumption and waste production is a goal. To reduce waste streams and especially toxic wastes, the region's residents and businesses minimize their consumption and focus on local products and materials that can be absorbed by the local environment or readily reused. Toxic materials are rarely and carefully used." The Charter, um, o- offers this as a, this is kind of a background policy thing, which, so I guess, but by now, that's really clear. That's the point I want to make. But I also want to point out that, um, wait a minute, here we go, that there's a contrast here with the bylaw because um, in the staff report on the bylaw, it says, and I quote, "Section 1 establishes clear rules for material management and user activities on the RRC site. Key regulations include," and then there's some listed, and then it says as one of those, "Scavenging and salvaging of materials is prohibited." Period. That's, that's in contrast to what I was just telling you about the policy. Overall policy. So those are some, that's reason number one is that we have a policy and we appear to have a contradiction to it. And so we need to fix that. Number two, the TCSADA OCP, Official Community Plan, promotes reuse. Okay, so the OCP has a quote, which is, um, let's see, right here. This is section 2 dot 4 dot 3, titled Solid Waste and Recycling. And, um, on that page, under policies, it says the following, quote, "Promote the working towards zero solid waste management philosophy that focuses on waste reduction, recycling, and reuse prior to disposal." I, I see a quite a contrast between the word promote in our OCP and the word prohibit in the bylaw, proposed bylaw. So I want to point that out as a second. So that's kind of a one issue, but I was only quoting the staff report before, and now I want to quote from the proposed bylaw itself. There's under regulation, under regulations, Regulation Letter I says, and I quote, "No person shall scavenge or salvage or remove material deposited at solid waste management facilities." Note, that's plural. Unless approved by the supervisor or manager, the supervisor being located in Powell River, and I believe so is the manager. And on TCSADA, we have a staff person, Wade, who's part-time. So, um, so there seems to be quite a disparity between what we call Lot 6 and how, how that is set up and operates, and it's within our OCP to promote Lot 6. And then what's being proposed in this bylaw. And, and that's a significant issue that needs to be fixed. So that's my second point. My third point is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We've been doing this for 40 years on TCSADA, and there's no need to revise this. It works great. People love it. It's a great policy. So please, please, uh, work an exemption into your language in that bylaw. And then finally, I want to point out, number four, if this bylaw were to pass as proposed, I think that it would cons- it, there's a lot of people would still keep going into Lot 6 illegally, thus making them criminals under the bylaw. And that's absolutely unacceptable. That would create disrespect for the law. It would create bad vibes for the reputation of the Regional District. And it wouldn't accomplish any of the objectives I think you hope to accomplish with this bylaw. Thank you for listening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tom, um, for your presentation. I'll ask Directors if there are any questions of the delegate. Are there any questions? I'm seeing no hands. I guess I will throw in one little question. Um, and that is, how many, how many times a year do you use this roughly?
Oh, I use this probably about, well, it depends, um, on what I'm up to in a given year, but in the past, I've gone in a couple of times a month. And, and right now, I probably go in there about maybe, I don't know, in a year, I might go in three or four times, just me personally. But when I was farming, I was doing this all the time, and it saved me thousands of dollars.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there are no hands, no other questions, um, thank you. We will move on to our second delegation. Um, Philip, too? Are you there, Philip? He's not there? Okay. Um, then we will go on to our third delegation, who is Seneca Anthony. Is anyone there?
Yeah, I'm here. Hold on, let me turn on, I forgot to turn on my camera here. Been a while since I've used this thing. Oh, Jesus. I guess you don't really need my camera, but it would be nice.
Well, you can go ahead anyway if you would like to, and, um, you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Hold on, what the hell? Uh, okay, well, I guess. Yes, yes, thank you. Someone knows what they're doing. Obviously not me. You'd think I would know. Um, okay, so, um, I appreciate Tom's very detailed knowledge of policy and all the things, because that's, that's, um, not in my wheelhouse. Um, what I wanted to speak to was like a very personal anecdote, because we, my household, we utilize Lot 6 very heavily. My dad is very inventive and tinkery, and I swear half of our, what we do and what we make is from Lot 6, like made of gate and then, like, it's the thing that chops, um, barley fodder and like, I think our, like, shower head is from Lot 6 and our kitchen sink tap and, um, the list is truly endless. Um, it is such a resource for so many people who, because we don't have access, even if, let's say you have unlimited money, you can't necessarily get what you want when you want it, but often it's just there at Lot 6 waiting for you. Um, so I think like, it's a very, very important resource to the community for so many reasons. Um, and I know that Wade has, he does have some concerns about, which I don't think is really related to this, but like, there is, he probably could use some support in some ways, but he really does know best. He's been there for so long. He's been there, I think, those 20 years. And he, like, he really is passionate about it and takes, like, he takes his job very seriously, and he's very concerned about safety and concerned about all these things. And I think he is like the person you should consult for any kind of concerns about or modifications. Like, he is the person who knows what would make sense, what does and what doesn't, because a lot of money can be spent or a lot of rules can be put in place, but they might not serve the community. They might just, like Tom said, just create sort of dissonance between the, like, legislation and what the community needs and what the community is going to do. So, yeah, I think a bit, a solid way, it's like a ban, a scavenging ban is going to be counterproductive and not produce the results that any of us want. And it's going to be just a loss for the community and a loss for everybody. And I think that would be very, I'd be very sad to see that very special part of this unique island get sort of trampled underfoot. So, yeah. I think that's, that's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Seneca. Um, are there any questions of the delegation? Directors, I'm seeing no hands. So I want to thank you very much for your obviously heartfelt presentation. Um, it's been very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last on our registered, um, delegation list is Colleen Madri. Is she there?
I'm here.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Come in. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you for the presenters who talked, uh, so eloquently before me. I'd like to share our experience living on TCSADA these last three years and using Lot 6 to do renovations. Uh, we use it for, um, gardening, make devising things for gardening. I just spray painted an old um, bike wheel for a bean trellis this morning before I came in for this. Uh, any renovations we've done, pieces of metal. TCSADA really prides themselves on being a self-sufficient community and neighbors supporting neighbors. And so when my neighbor takes the metal to the metal dump to Lot 6 and drops it off, and then I go later and find a piece of metal, a piece of angle iron, uh, stove rack, any of those items, they have shared that with me. And I do the same when I dump off, um, metal that I don't need anymore or can't use anymore. So it's an amazing community resource. And, um, we couldn't have done the renovations to the home that we live in here on TCSADA without being able to go to Lot 6 and getting those special pieces that, um, you can't always buy, um, or find. And of course, it always involves a ferry trip or perhaps a trip to Vancouver or the island to do that. So I really appreciate the, um, opportunity and options that are available to me on this island to go and, um, respective respectfully take things from Lot 6 and leave things there. And, um, I would like to see TCSADA exempted from this bylaw. I think we're a very special situation here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Colleen. Are there any questions of Directors for the delegation? I'm seeing no hands, so I want to thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any other delegations or has, um, don't know? Nope. Okay. So is that, are there any unregistered delegation? Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have, um, well, quite a few letters to consider under correspondence. Is there any business arising from the correspondence? I'm seeing no hands. So let's move on to unfinished business. Now, there are three sections. Um, as you will see, 6.1, 6.2, and 3. And I understand that Jason would like to provide a presentation to us for the start of our debate and discussion on each one. So as he does that, starting with 6.1, um, we can then ask questions of him, uh, before we put any motions on the table. So there is an opportunity to do that. Everybody good with that process? Seeing heads, nodding, all right. So let's begin with 6.1, and Jason, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. And so we're very pleased to be able to present, uh, and be able to spend some time on these three reports that, yeah, they're all updated, that regional district solid waste representation into the bylaw. Staff are recommending that the bylaw be applicable to all curate waste and recycle facilities as they all function under the Regional Waste Management Service, and that will create consistency across the region. Report number one introduces updated definitions, certified site regulations, and expanded list of prohibited materials that align with the current environmental and safety requirements. Report number two addresses handling of useful recyclable materials. Um, aligns the definitions that we have locally and our practices, the initial, uh, DPR recycling programs, and prepares us for expanded waste diversion opportunities. Report number three establishes, uh, or rather recommends establishing a new tipping fee schedule. That includes per ton rates, per unit rates, and minimum charges for an expanded list of acceptable materials. Before we dive into the details, I just want to really quickly remind everyone where we are in 2017, 2017 Solid Waste Management Plan timeline. And so, very briefly, the Solid Waste Management Plan was approved by the authority board in the ministry by, um, 2017. Uh, the plan outlined the build out of the RRC and the expansion of waste and recycle service offerings. Uh, the RRC build was finally completed just in January 2025, just a few months ago. And as anticipated in the plan back in 2017, um, section 6.4 of the plan said that we will need to update and enhance the curate bylaws to support the operational services. Um, the RRC is now ready to expand. We've been doing phase opening and feeling of operations. Um, but the bylaw, it is needed now before we advance any further. Bylaw, before you say, it is a draft. There, there has been a legal review of the bylaw draft. And we have some edits that are going to improve the flow of the document. Um, that's that. We've also been reviewing this document, uh, for quite a while now, and we have some small edits to formatting fluctuation that we'd like to do. So none of this is going to change the context of the document before you. Um, but in light of those known edits, what staff are hoping we can do today is seek feedback on the content of the bylaw, which can be incorporated into a final draft. This first report has been focused on the foundational changes of bylaw itself, um, including turning the definitions, the new regulations, and a listing of people and prohibited materials. Those updates will help to ensure safe, consistent, environmental, responsible operations at the RRC and the other PRD-operated instant rental facilities. All of these support broader goals outlined in the Solid Waste Management Plan. I'll pause here. Um, you're happy to walk through any of the details and answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, um, excuse me, thank you, Jason. Um, I will open up to Directors to raise their hands, and, um, I know I'm happy to put myself on the list, but if anyone wishes to go first. Director Elliott, would you like to start?
Um, so are there ways to handle things in local places like TCSADA or differently in, in favor of, um, what works better for those areas? And I speak mainly to the scavenging and salvaging concerns that I've heard today. Are there ways for us to make changes to to make that friendlier for those areas?
Jason?
Thank you, Chief Chair. What I am hoping to clarify first is this bylaw is entirely in favor of increasing fire recycling and reuse opportunities. There, there's nowhere in here, uh, where we have the intention to stop what has happened. There are certain activities that we do want to see happen in a safe way and in an environmentally friendly way. And so what we're putting this language in place to do is to say we want to see this happening in an authorized manner. So this is the foundation. This is, um, the, the legal document that allows a curate operating services, which, which are unique by location. Um, it does not get into the specific of the actual operations and procedures that each site. We have legal advice. We have insurance advice that we should have the salvaging clause. Protect our son as from an authorized, if there is a. The good side of this is that we will absolutely come authorized for that happen.
If I can interrupt here, um, right now, we're focusing on item 6.1, which is the first part of the proposed, um, bylaw update. And so right now, it's mainly, um, the schedule of definitions, like regulations, et cetera. So just if we focus on those things, but I'm sorry for interrupting. Please go ahead.
So that was the line in, in the report attached to 6.1 that I was speaking to. And then, so the other part I wanted to ask about was the safety measures, including keeping children under 13 inside of, and pets, which I don't have an issue with inside of vehicles. Rex accorded with me. I don't know about other people, but I, I'm a single mom and my kids help me do things like take the garbage out. And it would be contrary to our culture to raise my children to stay in the car and let their mom do the heavy lifting in that case. And so, um, wondering if there are safe ways to have uh, the children help the parent that are not going to be running all over the place or whatever, and word that differently. A definition that looks at children being, you know, within five feet of the parent or, you know, some other thing other than stay, staying in the car.
Good, Chair. The, uh, intention of this rule is to, to only have this applicable at certain high-risk places, uh, the RRC. This is where we have, uh, all hazard. And the railing system that is designed there is built for an industrial environment, not to a residential code that would protect a child. So again, I'm hoping to clarify that this will be specific to very, very certain areas of the site where there are signs that clarify the rule of applicable here. For the most part, the majority of our facilities will allow children and pets to participate in, in their cycle of activities. Um, this is another situation where we do not have the capacity to, to be with every person that are on site. And so this will take some parental discretion to enforce these kinds of rules. But ultimately, as a legal document, this is the advice we've been given from our employers and from our insurers, that this type of rule is appropriate, uh, just due to the risks, um, of how the children will run away on an active dumpster outside.
Yeah, so the children and the animals are not the same thing, but, okay.
Okay, thanks, Director Elliott. So I'm next on the speakers list to be followed by Director Gisborne. So I'd like to, uh, first of all, appreciate the concerns that have been raised by members of the community and also the intense work that Jason, you and your team have gone through to put all of this together. I understand that the, the impetus, of course, is the opening of the Resource Recovery Center. And you'll recall, um, you know, some time ago, I asked you why it was applicable to Lot 6. Um, interestingly enough, when I read the existing, uh, solid waste regulation bylaw, which I did this morning, um, there is no reference to the metal transfer station or Laskidi in that, uh, document. It is only referring to the site that we operated, which was contracted out. So this whole thing is a new venture for people on TCSADA. It is not, you know, something that's being tweaked or not tweaked. It's something brand new. So first of all, that is something that is a significant change. That site was never identified previously in the bylaw. And so all of the issues that have come up, um, are because this is something new. Now, you just mentioned, uh, following Director Elliott's question about, you know, age 13, how in some places that's okay. That's why a Cookie Kyle-style, uh, format, which is what we have when applying the same rules to your RRC to other centers, um, isn't appropriate. While it is appropriate in some places, it's not for the RRC. I totally get that and don't disagree with you. However, they're all covered equally by the same bylaw and forced to live with that regulation. So that is kind of a contradiction. And part of the reason why, um, uh, you know, there is a, a concern, because one part says something, one part says something else. The concerns that, uh, people are raising about access, interestingly enough, um, access, off-hours will be at people's own risk, and I understand that's would continue. There is a track record, interestingly enough, when I looked up bylaw 99 on our website. Bylaw 99 is Bylaw ninety nine is the only document that pertains to the metal transfer station that I know of. And so.
Board of Order Chair?
Yep, this is related to section.
Is this getting into debate though versus?
No, this is leading up to questions. My question is, um. There's been a track record of forty-five years of this thing operating and no issues. Why is consistency, which is your word with everything else. More important than community values? And the type of decision that was made in twenty twenty when the board. Agreed that the fence should not be built around lot six because some level of risk was acceptable in keeping with. Community values. So why is consistency so much more important? I'm trying to understand. Jason?
Chair, uh, uh, very briefly, uh, the need for consistency is because. Uh, we have consistent regulations across B C. Uh, there are our safety regulations, environmental regulations. And also we do not own the land, uh, that these sites are owned. So we also have consistent rules in our thesis for the land. So, um, there's efficiency in. Administering these, these types of rules across multiple sites. And then also meaning just to communicate the same consistent message across the community. So all the expectation is the same.
Right, but it isn't necessarily the same set of community values, so. Uh, I'll hold that thought. Um, my follow-up question is that, um. We have heard that, um, the new bylaw, which is a new thing for lot six. Um, prohibits salvaging without the permission of the supervisor or manager. Now, on Texada, there is no supervisor or manager. We do have a caretaker. Um, but that is who looks after our site. Also is only open sixteen hours per month as opposed to twenty hours per week at the R R C. So my question is, why then is, um. Is salvaging not then totally prohibited? If you need permission of the supervisor or manager, there's no supervisor or manager to give you permission, therefore it's not permitted. And does that not completely take away the opportunity for salvaging from lot six, the way it is currently written?
Good chair. Salvaging for using a person is fully authorized during some of these open hours. Uh, so just know, we are not taking away any of the existing opportunities. Um, and we are also trying to align where we are also not saying it's okay. For the general public to access the Q R D site after hours because, because it is unsupervised. Um. Addressing their concern with supervisor or manager approval, we can have standing authorizations. For salvage that occurs, like you said, during operating hours. Um, what we want to stay away from here is. Then putting a decision on a local caretaker. Um, uh, ultimately changes the Q R D's risk exposure. So those types of decisions, I believe should be made by, uh, learning staff. And, and not our contractors.
But you're gonna have blanket approval or for the caretaker to give out. If I arrive at lot six during opening hours and, and um, wish to either bring or remove something. To remove something, does he have then a piece of paper that he gives me permission? On behalf of a supervisor who is not there to inspect the situation? To make that determine, like, how's that gonna work? And that people are really concerned about not being able, if you follow the absolute wording in the bylaw. So maybe the wording can be tweaked, um, maybe some reference can be made to, uh, there is no supervisor available at, on the Texada site. I, I don't know how you tweak that, but I guess can that be tweaked?
Through the chair, yes, this is in draft form and it can be tweaked. Um. We have, we have pulled multiple metal salvage recycle facilities. And we're, we're also trying to toe the line between, um, something like a pickup park facility where we have a front counter with levers. Um, that is not required. So. Functionally, I believe your question was functionally, how will this work from a day-to-day basis? Um, and that is similar to, um. The, the, the metal recyclers in Powder River, that's, we got some recyclers are black palm auto salvage during open hours. You can salvage and after open hours, uh, it is not. Uh, so to be clear, during open hours, it would be a blanket. Or welcome to, to, to all of the material recycle that you wish.
Thank you. As long as the changes reflect that, so that's great. Director Gibbon, you're next.
Thank you, Chair.
And then Director Brett.
Um, I have a, sorry, a few questions. Uh, thank you for your presentations and clarification. Um, one of my first questions is, uh, I, I know we've had a number of project managers. Are just this and you're the newest iteration. Um, when I took a look through, what is it, the S W M P N A C, the Solid Waste Management Plan. Monitoring Advisory Committee, uh, the last time they met appears to have been over two years ago in twenty twenty-three. So I presume you came on after that committee last met? Is that, I've been in that position for over two years.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, um, so with that committee, when I took a look under their, their responsibility of deliverables. One of them is recommendations to the board on changes required to the plan implementation. So like, we established a committee, they don't seem to have any members. And one of the complaints I had last time around was like, hey, we get this policy. You know, I know you're very busy trying to make that facility operate. But I think it's that committee and this board to clarify the intention of this board. And if there's things in the policy that the board doesn't like, then it's our job to. Ride direction for that clarification because this is in draft form. Is that a correct understanding? Uh, we, we, as a board, should be going like, well, let's clean this language up. That's for us to give that direction, right? But of course, it still has to comply with legal.
Through the chair. Uh, I just want to rephrase your questions and sure I understand, so, um, you're asking. If we wanted to change, should have been involved in developing about this. Final bylaw before changing the board.
If the committee was actually meeting.
Okay, I understand. Through the chair. Um, the terms of reference for the committee. Does state quite related to the ten-year solid waste management plan. And, and as you stated, have the implementation of that plan. Um, section six point four of that plan. Uh, it gets quite explicit in takes of bylaw, develop it and enhance it that needs to be done. Um, so, well, I. I would agree that we, we are not getting into the weeds of operations here. This is not still implementation of the plan. Um. This is in line with the plan. Um.
It, it's essentially, we have a committee, committee is not meeting, and I think the committee could have really helped our staff. But, and I think that's where the board needs to step up and either abolish that committee or create a new committee to help. You know, get more eyes on this, if that makes sense, to kind of clarify. Some of the community misconceptions or some of the challenges. Because when I read this, uh, I see the intention of some things and. You know, you, you read a proposed bylaw, five people read it six different ways, uh, so, and that's where I'm thinking. I think we've had a bit of an issue.
One, remember.
Yes, and that is the bylaw six oh two, is six point one. Um, so then my follow-up question is, when I do read this, uh, I believe, what is it? Fees and violations, it speaks of, you know, waste scales at solid waste management facility, singular. Would it be easier or, or a good idea to maybe change some of these languages to, you know, describe the waste transfer station or resource recovery center? Because what we've heard from members of the public is they'll, they'll read something and they're like, well, there is no waste scale at lot six. And it's like, well, maybe we can specify the bylaw that, you know, the waste scales rules only apply to where we actually have a waste scale. And I think that's something we can clean up as a, as a board. I'm seeing, I think I'm seeing some dots. Does that make sense? Fine, that's.
Were you looking for an answer?
Yeah, I, I think I, I think I might have gotten that.
Okay, you, is that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till the debate now to really jump in.
Okay, thanks. So I have Director Brander.
I got something wrong, sorry.
Uh, Jason, yeah?
Thank you. Um, so I, I just wanted to also comment, just, um. This is a legal document and words that are there are for purpose, so, um. We do mean to use caution when we're amending some of these words. Uh, and, and just be mindful that this is totally play, language that is used from the troughs to receive. Um, so, so customizing the legal language, uh, to be that specific, that's come at price.
Thanks, Director Gibbon. Director Brander?
Yes, Director. Uh, I don't actually have a question. I just want to remind people, there's a lot of interest in this particular issue. That when staff prepare these reports, they're looking at it from a very practical point of view. They research insurers, other regional districts. They're looking out for ways to protect the R D from liability. Uh, if, um, the, the sentiments of the public come into play more when it reaches this table. So if we decide at some point and we want to make changes away from that because of what we hear in the public. That, that's not staff's responsibility. That's theirs is to protect the R D. And I, I, they're doing a great job with it. If we want to make any changes, then that comes on us. So just to make everybody clear that, even the sentiment is, is not staff's responsibility.
Thanks, Director Brander. Um, I have Director Southcott and then Director Garcia, do you have your hand up? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I do.
Okay, Director Southcott.
Thank you, Chair. Good question. Does unauthorized activity trigger liability for the owner of the service? Uh, or the owner of the land upon which the service is delivered?
Jason?
If you will, Chair. All of our lease states that the Q R D is liable, uh, for an incident or event. While we hold the lease. Uh, in short, the Q R D is liable for unauthorized activity.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I wish I did have a follow-up. I will have a follow-up, but I don't at this very moment. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll hold that thought. Director Garcia.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my question is, uh, in terms of operations, separating the legal document from what happens. And is modifiable in, within reason in various areas. So my question is, does that, um. Make it more feasible for us to also have an operational guide along with the bylaw? Which could apply more to the areas without sticking our necks out, maybe the. To allow for certain activities to happen, but as guidelines for locals and locals communities. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but that's my question.
Do you, um, Jason? Very nice.
Thank you, Chair. So. A-again, just for clarity, so, um, are you asking whether we could have. Uh, a set of procedures that are outside of the bylaw? Um, that, that would allow us to remove some of the contact of the bylaw?
Oh, no. Uh, what I'm simply saying is that. There, there's the bylaw and then there's the operational guide. Do we need an operational guide that is more relative to each community? I don't know if that's possible or because, if in, in fact, because that's in writing, that just makes it more complicated for you, saying that you approved of this. And contradict your own bylaw. So I'm just asking for clarity on that, whether it might be useful.
Good, through the chair. I think we are partway towards what you're asking for. Um, under our safety program, we need to define all of our activities and procedures and design programs and. Assess the rest of those, so, um, operationally, fu-functionally. Uh, we likely already have an inventory of process and procedure. Um. We will likely, uh, need to keep track of the, the standing approvals. And the special unique, uh, functions that happen at the different sites. If, if for nothing else but for staff continuity. That.
Okay.
It is.
Okay, that answers my question, uh, because that's an opportunity. For some of this fine tuning that we were talking about to take place without altering the legal document per se.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Director Garcia. Director Southcott, for your follow-up question.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I did think of a follow-up question. If, and I'm thinking specifically of the Texada metal transfer site. There, the, uh, contractor employed by the R D is not working. Could it be considered that the R D is not providing the service that the site is designed for? Because there isn't an R D employee there supervising the service? I'm thinking of this in the context of, my original question was, does unauthorized activity trigger liability? Which I understand would be happening if someone went onto the site. Outside the time that the operator was there, the contract, um, operator, supervisor.
Jason?
Through, through the chair, so, um, fantastic question. Um, this is something I've been working up on with M I A C, uh, to get that answered. So, um, we went through all of this in twenty twenty-one. We had an assessment of the Texada. Little transportation site, and that was exactly the concern and their recommendation was we must post signage. Says, um, to. Paraphrasing, but using the site outside of normal hours is at your own risk. Um. There's.
Sure, Mr. Deborah.
Um, yeah, so when I, when I A C was there, right, they knew the site, they realized the site is. Not police that site, right? So access after hours, we have no ability to stop. And M I A C recognized that, said sign would cover us off for. People going in there after hours doing their things that they're gonna do. Realize that we can prevent that, but at least we're kind of covered by the sign.
Thank you.
And thank you. Good question. Um, Grace C E O?
Sorry.
Jason, yeah, you had more to add?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I did just want to add one more piece, um, as. In the provincial lease that we have for the Texada metal transfer station site. Um, they do not discern between whether we are open or not. It's if there is an environmental problem, we are liable. If there's a safety problem, we are liable. So whether we're open or not, um, we, we need to have some procedures, some protection signage. Uh, in place. There's, uh, what we are liable for.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So we've been through round one of questions. Um, because we're, um, addressing each item separately on six point one. You wish to have another round of questions? Or would you like to get into, since this is not going to be a formal motion, but rather, um. Suggestions that we have for the, um, changes that are gonna happen before it comes back to us. Which are, do you want more questions or are you happy to get into changes? C E O? Um, and then Director Garcia.
Through the chair, I just have one question of Jason, and that is. You mentioned at the onset that you had some edits, some proposed edits. Any of those edits? Involve items six point, six point one, which is the regulations definition.
Through the chair. Yes, let me just find um not specific that. There is um so we. Some advice from our our legal counsel is just that. We have to put the um. Site regulation, which which are currently proposed as a schedule. Um we need those into the body of the bylaw. So that's more of a layout. And then the only other edit aside from uh. Couple capital letters. Was uh to amend. You salvage and scavenge definition. Um to remove the word unauthorized. And this was just to provide internal consistency. As it is the definition. The word unauthorized noise.
Alright, thank you. Um Director Garcia, did you have your hand up? Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna jump in here and put myself next on the speakers list. And on that point. Jason, I'm reading, it says here. No person shall scavenge or salvage or remove deposits at solid waste management facilities. Remove material rather unless approved by the supervisor or manager. So I'm not seeing the word authorized in there. So I I guess I might ask what. Uh edit that you would consider so that when Texada people go during open hours and there's no supervisor or manager. How they are legally under the bylaw. Um expected to remove material.
Chair, a very simple way would be to add at the end of that sentence for their designate.
Okay.
Would give us as the supervisor or manager, the ability to.
And that would be a quite large. Authorization then that he can then just deal with everything.
There that was, uh there would be limitations, but through the chair. Um we would still establish the boundaries of that authorization. Uh but it would. Deal with the concern that that uh. The supervisor and manager are not visiting the site.
Okay, thank you. I'm also concerned about. The other kind of cookie cutter, one size fits all thing, um such as the uh the. Issue Director Elliott raised with the, you know, kids being there. Um and right now I can't think of another one, but I know there are several that. You know, there. They need to be tweaked. Things that make sense for the Resource Recovery Center don't necessarily make sense. You know, at lot six, you're governed by the the provincial ground lease that said so, you know, what can be stored there. So it the. Issues there are very different than the Resource Recovery Center, which will now be sort of taking everything in the universe, which is wonderful. But. So I'm just saying, these are things that I hope you will consider as part of your. And that's all I have to say, so. For their hands, C A O.
Well, through the chair. I I might had that. Think the operative word, the site regulations regarding that is posted. If you take a look at the. R R C, for instance. In a high traffic volume area, I'm gonna say down by the shed where the big trucks are moving in and out. That's probably gonna be posted. Down by the. Dead block walls. Probably not so likely. So I think the key word in this definition is posted. If there's no sign posted, then as Jason. Uh spoke to earlier, there's gonna be a lot of rental guidance and responsibility put on them to. Use their children's aid and help. Uh to their best ability and their uh judgment. So I think that keyword posted really helps signify things.
And it would be posted where. Kids were allowed to be or where they had to stay in their vehicle.
I would say where.
Otherwise, they would be allowed to get out. Okay, that makes it Director Gisborne.
Um is this the time when we get to really jump in?
Think right now, yeah, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Um just to clarify, my understanding is.
Any advice to our staff.
Yeah, um one of those signs uh in relation to like. It's under thirteen is posted actually at the Z block wall, and I do believe we heard from our manager of. Um the Resource Recovery Center Solid Waste Management, uh that there is a problem with those kind of fences. They're not designed. Essentially to keep kids from climbing through them. They got big holes. I do have a bit of an issue with, you know, children under thirteen years of age and pets must remain inside vehicles at solid waste. Facilities. Uh this is where I think there could be some extra additions to the definitions, uh such as the. Addition of a definition of waste transfer station um and or resource recovery center as well. Uh because when we get over to uh. Schedule B or two fees and violations, it says, you know, where the fee is based on weight, it shall be based on the difference between the loaded weight and empty weight of the vehicle. As determined by the vehicle weigh scales at the solid waste management facility. Now that is a singular term, but in the definitions, there isn't actually a definition for singular solid waste management facility. There is for plural and there the plural applies to all of our facilities, including lot six. Um so if we had a definition of waste transfer station, which is, as I understand, once you get past those scales, you're now within. Waste transfer station, that's more of an industrial setup. There's, you know, different. Uh expectations when you actually do arrive in there as opposed to something like lot six or the Black Point Recycling uh facility. So I would put that forward as a recommendation is, you know, have some extra definitions so that we can kind of parse these things out. Uh for the children under thirteen years of age, um. I got kids, I put them to work on the farm all the time. It's kind of an industrial setting. I would actually. Was an alternate amendment or language to J, which would then read where posted, children under thirteen years of age and pets. Must remain under control of a parent or guardian. At all times. It's essentially saying, parents, you have to have the kid under control. Uh and if you can't like, then yeah, like keeping the kid in the car is under under control. Uh because even over by the Z blocks. Not just the fence can be a concern, but other vehicles and stuff coming through, and we do want to make sure that people are safe and we're reducing our overall liability. Um the scavenge and salvage clause, um. I'm hearing the intent from both our management and from the board, which is we still want to promote salvaging, but. We don't want people like jumping over the fence and getting into the bin and, you know, cutting themselves and getting sued and that that's a bad thing. Um. The language of supervisor or uh manager, when you go to the definitions, also includes where they're designate, so they can then designate. Uh like operators and stuff at some of these smaller locations, but I think we can add additional language um to clarify or. Uh within like authorized areas. So we can actually have areas within our facilities where we say, hey, that's an area where you can go and. And get things. And then there's other areas, like for example, the bin where it's like, no, you can't actually. Jump into the bin. We have an area over there for you, and therefore it doesn't require some person. And I think that is the intention of what we're hearing from our staff, but we can clarify that, I think, with this bylaw to make it. Uh straight forward. Oh. Another one uh that kind of pops up, part D, under conditions of use. No person shall deposit out of region waste at solid waste management facility. I guess it should actually be facilities plural. The. Thing that makes us so unique, and I know we like to copy and paste other regional ethics. Is when you go to out of region waste, it is actually defined as any waste produced outside of our administrative boundaries of our regional district. Well, I think I don't need to explain to everyone that the Tlaman nation is not part of our administrative boundaries. Um and yet there is waste being produced, and then it comes to our facilities. Uh technically, if this bylaw gets kind of adopted as is, then it's like, oh, Tlaman waste transfer, like you can't, we we're not allowed to accept your waste. Uh which I don't think is the intention of this bylaw. There is also challenge of, I believe, Hardy Island and Nelson Island. Um they do tend to come up here to use our grocery stores and things like that. I don't think anyone's gonna dig through their trash and say, oh, no, you're from Nelson, we don't take your your waste. I. Believe the intention of this language is similar to other regional districts where, you know, uh. E B L and Animo starts moving their stuff from one region to another and and they have different. Ice schemes. So I think a little bit of work on that could help uh kind of alleviate some of those uh unforeseen consequences with the Tlaman. And some of our surrounding areas, so maybe saying like a. Regional area and inclusive of the Tlaman and and a few of those other islands could be added. To do and the other one is, this has been brought up to me. Uh I remember the public was concerned about like the new recycling center where they have to go and they gotta park and then they gotta. They said, oh, I have to leave my car unattended, so I lock it before I can go into the recycling center. Well, section M says no person shall leave their vehicle unattended at solid waste management facilities. And I'm wondering if maybe just a an extra word in there that says, you know. Leave their vehicle unattended for an extended period of time or something like, because sometimes they're just offloading and they. Lock their car so they can go on rummage and then they come back and it's like, they're technically leaving it unattended. But. They're they're gonna be back and they're they're nearby. So I think. Um I get the intention of this. Oh, that is M uh. Section one subsection M, no person shall leave their vehicle unattended. And big thank you to the corporate officer for keeping up with my rambling. And. And those are the. Those are the main kind of. Those changes that I would I would suggest. Um oh, and the very last one is. Uh the the offense, which is section I of under section two. Which is the fines. Uh fines can be issued no less than two hundred dollars. And no, not more than two thousand dollars. And. I'm kind of, I was thinking about like all these different potential violations and maybe you have an issue where someone's violated it, now they want to make amends, but we still have to issue a fine. I think the lowest amount would be twenty dollars. But then I thought about some of these other violations and I was like, thousand dollars might not actually be enough to. Really hammer someone. So I would actually be willing to say twenty dollars is the minimum and even ten thousand dollars could be the maximum in case someone wants to be belligerent. We can. We can scale it up and hit back. It's. But ideally, we want to make sure that this bylaw is meeting the intention of the board and the public. And yet also dealing with our liability. And I think that's where we can get some clarification with the bylaw rather than multiple layers policies. Um that's my main input. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Input from other directors on section six.
I'm just working, similar to how we did it at our last meeting on a. On a motion, I just want to clarify that I have uh inventions down correctly as we proceed. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
So um uh investigating adding the work, uh the. Phrase or the designate for providing authority to our caretakers or contractors for scavenging. Um uh. A definition for. Or investigate. Uh. Definition for waste transfer station area. Was there another word that you said there?
Um I think I said Resource Recovery Center, but the Resource Recovery Center encompasses the recycling and waste transfer. I think. Waste transfer is more important because there's not a waste scale for the recycling center, unless I have something. It's only waste transfer, I think. Um.
Explore G must be under the control of a parent or guardian. Um D, research out of region waste to avoid unintended exclusion.
Yep.
Uh M, no person should leave vehicle and it uh more provide more information um on. M, no person should leave vehicle unattended.
Yeah, extended period. Someone might le- leave their vehicle unattended for a few minutes and. I I know. Our staff right now are are good, but sometimes people get a bylaw in front of them, they're like, you have to. That's like, that's not our intention.
Investigate lowering and um.
Decreasing minimum and increasing maximum.
Okay, so okay, thank you very much.
And I think the other one was under. The scavenging um was also authorized areas, having that included. Where they can actually say, hey, this area is an authorized area and having that as a potential option. And I think that covers. Under like the approval of their designates, because I think it's like the standing authorization. Thing was mentioned, it's in the bylaw, might just help clarify to the public so that when they read it, they they go, oh, okay, yeah. I don't actually have to call Jason every time I want to pick up. Cause I'm sure you're busy. I think that's it.
Thank you, Director Gisborne, Director Elliott, and then I'm gonna put myself back on the speakers.
Um. So salvage and scavenging in the definitions means. Unauthorized removal and recovery of materials for reuse or sale. Meaning that if someone was do it, was authorized to do that, it no longer fits the definition of salvage and scavenging. And I'm wondering if that's gonna be a little bit confusing.
C A O?
Through the chair, I think if you heard Jason earlier, one of his edits is to remove unauthorized.
That would do it. Thank you. I must have missed that, sorry.
Um you haven't spoken yet on this, Director Brandon, I know, yet I'm with the bound to, so go ahead.
Seeing as the the metal transfer station on Texada is. Different to the R R C um many ways have been identified. Um. Potential, I'm just kind of thinking, what a potential option would be to have. It to be its own separate service and no longer be part of the solid waste management plan, because then Texada could make the decisions on it. How it's run themselves. They're not involved with the rest of the region. Also, that would um. Or yeah, probably limit liability for their other residents, Q R D. And I guess we go through the chair to the C A O and or anybody else who could answer if that is a legitimate option.
Well, I'll take a stab at it, and that is to say I don't know until I speak to the community. Um I don't know what the appetite for that would be.
I guess I was asking through the C A O, like what the practicality or the or even the possibility of it being.
You?
Uh through the chair, um. Try my new device. Uh through the chair. We could explore that. I think it's uh. Practical in that it. I don't see any flaws in doing that. But we would have to ensure that we could. Uh because always management is a mandated service by the province. Have to ensure that we could. We dissect out of a regional service to then allocate. Those responsibilities into a local service, just to ensure that. It's anything. That the province wouldn't get angry for. Getting our responsibility in some shape or form. Uh I I think. Actually, I think. Would be done. Is there some type of uh loophole that I'm unaware of uh? And in the uh legislation for services.
Okay, thank you. Um and the final thing I wanted to um through change to. Item I under site regulation, schedule B, and that is the fine. Of two thousand dollars if you're guilty of an offense under the bylaw. So I'm thinking of the people who will continue um as they have safely done for forty five years. To use the lot six facility after hours. They were never previously covered by the solid waste regulation bylaw. So never before has there been the threat. Of a possible two thousand dollar fine. I realize the two is reduced from ten as it is in the old bylaw. And clearly, that's a more realistic number. But understand that it has now, it has been zero. Um because that has never been spelled out as lot six was never covered by the solid waste um. Regulation by law. So there are a number of people who will continue to be upset. If um taking a knob off an old lawnmower to get theirs going so you can do your three grass cutting jobs that day. Um is subject to a two thousand dollar fine. So my question is, how can you rectify that? So that it isn't, you know, a. A total irony that we've won this big national award for, you know, uh repurposing, et cetera. Yet we're gonna find somebody two thousand dollars if they do it on Texada. So during off hours, of course. We can't encourage it on one hand and squash it on another hand. So is, can you make a tweak? So is, can you make a tweak in that part of this um? Schedule B so that we're not um basically criminalizing people who. Continue to repurpose when there is no other possible repurposing facility on the island. That is my question, Jason.
Is this is the language that's in existing solid waste by law? Certainly more efficient to have consistent regulation across the region. Um, I'm, we would probably need advice on whether that puts us into the territory of allowing. Something that contradicts our.
I I understand that explanation, um and if you can explore it, I would appreciate um. Doing whatever would be necessary to allow people to not feel that they are. Subject to a two thousand dollar fine every time they go in there. And I know they're going in at their own risk, so the liability part has already been discussed, but that that. Possibility of a fine was never there before because lot six was never covered by the old bylaws. So this is a brand new thing that is now being imposed from. We're gonna, you know, not let you do it officially, um but to if you. Do it unofficially, we're gonna find you two thousand dollars, and that's pretty heavy handed, and I can see a lot of people feeling that way. So how can you still, you know, respect the the legalities of it, yet? Not be so heavy handed on residents of Area D. C A O?
Through the chair. Through the chair. He brought up the. People in Texada Island were not under the bylaw previously. I think has to sit back and reflect and look conversely at the fact that the Q R D. Not protected on that island either. And how the bylaws will protect the Q R D in a litigating circumstance. With regard to your other query. Uh, I would recommend or suggest to reflect on. The constabulary that down the highways, I don't know if any of you have ever been subject to getting. Pulled over and asked how fast you were going. And you said sixty one kilometers, sir, now, and they said, okay, I'm gonna give you a warning, don't do it again. Perhaps that's the way to answer your question about the fines.
Good one, that's not written in the bylaw.
The R C M P's discretion to say, I'm gonna let you go next time.
Um, is there anything else yet? Go ahead.
Thank you um. I remember when the uh Resource Recovery Center was uh just being planned. And there were a number of us who were thrilled about the whole intention of reducing waste and the stated intention in the. Original uh. Waste. Plan was to get to zero waste. And for some of us. Who consider waste to be wrong, period, uh that was pretty thrilling. Uh, and then now. And I absolutely respect that an organization like the regional district has to comply with. Provincial. Legislation and regulation, which is becoming increasingly, well, it's big, it's been increasingly uh. Or with respect to liability for generations, actually, I think. And that really gets in the way of. The principle of, or in my view, of responsibility, which. Goes right back to zero waste, it's responsible to. To minimize our waste, so. This this there's a dilemma in this, which I think is addressed by all these emails and the general concern in the community. We don't want to waste and we want to reuse everything that can possibly be reused, and that is also the intention of the original waste plan too. It was to get rid of waste. So I think there's two roles, there can only be so much put into. Bylaws and then perhaps procedures that stem out of the bylaws, just like regulation that stems out of legislation. And then there has to be a way, which I think has been suggested more than once around this table by staff and um perhaps elected people. That we we have an understanding of how this actually works, so we're at an initial point of that, but it really. Practicalities and the the deep principle uh which was represented by the intention to turn weight. You eliminate waste, really needs to be respected. And I I respect that we're at an initial point and really appreciate the work of our, you know, cooperative discussion here. And particularly the work of staff to try to accommodate both these challenges. That hopefully can find the way forward, you really make this work for us as far as, you know, kids and. You know, in hazardous environments, I introduced my kid to hazardous environments as soon as I possibly could, basically as soon as he could walk. So that he would learn how to um assess danger and he was capable of doing that. All in the story about him there, and not all, there there's varying levels of ability there, so as a community, we have to work together here. They, and it's very uh grateful to see how we're doing that right now. I mean, expect that it will continue, thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Director Sethcott, is there anything else on six point one before we move on? Seeing no hands. Move on to six point two, Corporate Officer.
I move that we refer six point one to staff with the input in the committee.
That we have a motion?
Uh, a motion to do this list, refer this list to staff and develop a bylaw.
So moved.
Seconded by. Your South Court discussion. You're a good one.
Uh, yeah, I think our board's doing a good job right now in identifying the concerns and the intention of our overall solid waste management plan and hearing the concerns of the community. Uh, however, I still do have an underlying concern with our solid waste management plan monitoring advisory committee, which. Really should be doing some of this legwork for us, and I'm thinking because there's like no membership of it. Um, I know this is a little bit to the side of of this bylaw. I would, whatever happens with this bylaw, I'd like us to almost review it in a year and actually have a committee with members of the public. To help keep an eye on this and how's the rubber hitting the road, rather than dumping everything onto Jason's shoulders or Mr. Cohen-Hobbin's shoulders, who's. Busy out at the Resource Recovery Center, and I know other regional districts have solid waste management committees um. And I think that we should get rid of the solid waste management plan monitoring advisory committee, form a solid waste management committee, open it up to members of the public. And then as things arise, because it's a brand new facility and there's gonna be growing pains, and I. Will just say, I went and took a look at the facility and there's some things I look at it and I'm like, okay, that that works, and there's some things I look at it and I'm like. We might have to spend more money there to make that more functional, but I think that really comes with community buy-in. And public involvement, and I just want to say a big thank you to everyone that wrote in um to express their concerns because. Recovery of resources is important to not just the regional district, but the community as well, and if our bylaws not aligning with our intention. Then I think this will help us get in the right direction, so I'm in support of this motion um. I guess it's a notice of motion uh that I plan to bring forward a motion to terminate. The other committee and then state a or ask for terms of reference for a solid waste management committee.
Okay, notice received.
I'll send something to the corporate office later.
I'll put myself on the speakers list for change, that is just to say that. I'm, I don't believe, and I've never believed this, that a one size fits all, fits everything, it does not. And I think this is where we can clearly understand and appreciate how differences. At the various sites that we operate all for resource um recovery. Are hugely different, rather than creating a new service as been suggested, I think it would be more sensible. Us all to work together under the common service, but recognize that there are certain issues involving. Um, a particular site just as um, you know, salvaging at lot six or whatever the issue might be. But we need to understand that there are differences at the different sites are okay. Consistency is not the most important goal, it's resource recovery, and that's what we're all about. And doing that legally and safely, so I I just want to say that one size fits all is not. To me, it's never been the right way to go, and I respect that you're doing, you know, you're, you know. Giving it your all, and I get that, and I respect that, um but I still in principle don't feel that. The cookie cutter approach is the right answer for lot six under this bylaw, so. Said that, I will support the recommendation, anything else? Director Elliott?
Thank you, um, so I think the additions we've tried to tweak and so forth um are good. Uh, there still is an intention of the bylaw to change current practice on Texada Island. Um, so no matter how good our intentions are to promote reuse recycling, however. Um, the limited hours of the Texada Station is gonna change the practices of what happens there. Or maybe it won't change the practice, but it will change how people feel about it because they'll be operating outside of what is authorized. And um. That doesn't necessarily feel great, and so we need to pay, even if. Bylaw, we need to pay attention to uh communication around uh all of this and and. Try and minimize negative impacts to reuse and re reduction. And to how people can access the stuff that they need from site six outside of authorized hours. That's gonna be a reality of the situation and non enforcement might be the policy. But if that's the case, um, how does that look? And this should probably be a conversation about it.
Thank you, Director Elliott, um, anything further on the motion on the. Seeing no hands, I'll call all in favor. Can you pull?
Whether I can make a motion to request, uh, say, a brief report about the legality or the possibilities of uh creating a separate. Service for the Texada Waste Metal Transfer Station. Make that motion.
I'll second that motion um discussion.
I just think it'd be good information to have, if we're looking at all the options and uh maybe you find out that. Zadans would like to have control over it and they're in support of it, it's just if we don't have that information, we can't discuss it really.
And and that re- report, it would be great if that covered the the cost implication, so it would be revenue neutral, in other words. Our tax dollars would go to um our local uh waste management. As Laskidi used to do and say as we do as recreation, um we need, that would be an important piece of information to know what would. The cost of that look like.
I guess I'd like to ask the C A O through the chair if you think there'd be an onerous thing that is being requested, because if it is, I don't want to put that much work on the staff.
You?
Uh, through the chair, I don't. Through the chair, I don't think it'll be that bad.
Yeah, um, Laskidi Island Solid Waste Management Service used to be separated and then we amalgamated it because. We are responsible as a regional district for solid waste across the entire region. Um, I've been hearing a lot about lot six on Texada Island, and I know there's kind of this attitude of like, well, that's a Texada Island thing. I really do believe it's a solid waste management thing, and the reason why is I want a lot six in Area B, a lot of farm stuff and I I. A lot of the equipment that I run can't get parts for. Um, so I'm not actually in favor of sending this off to staff to ask for a report on creating another service when. I think it fits very well within our existing solid waste management service, we created a new service. That's only impacting Texid Island, it still is voted on by the entire board as an unweighted vote. So it would really only, in terms of voting structure, it would go from a weighted vote on the whole board to an unweighted vote on the whole board, but it is still up to the entire board. And there is, of course, still the liability of the regional district, and I I don't, I'm not in favor of creating another service for lot six, I think. Our board can really learn from it, figure out how to support it, and potentially replicate the success of lot six. In other areas on either Savory Island or Laskidi or even in Paradise Valley. I'm not in favor of putting more paperwork on staff or something that I don't think I would even support if it came back and said, oh, yeah, it's relatively cheap. And I think the this motion is actually stemming from concern related to the bylaw. Bylaw is our bylaw to control, I really do believe that we can actually add extra definitions for things like. Uh, metal recycling areas and and we can actually dig into it. Without that solid waste management committee, which I think should have Texada Island reps. Um, but if we had such a committee, we could actually task them of being like, hey, can we get some language in here that's more specific to. Things like lot six, you don't say lot six specifically, but like lot six, and we all know what that means, and then we can. Maybe parse out some some specific language within the bylaws, because. What's happening there is a success, and I think we want to keep that success going, and then as. Demands change in the community, we might actually go, hey, let's replicate this, maybe Lund wants it. So I'm actually not in favor of this motion, I think we should continue to support what's going on with lot six within our existing framework. Harve it off into a separate category, it's just gonna cost money for staff. Even if it's not owners. Chair, I agree with both. Director Brander and Director Gisborne, and I'm just thinking that maybe this is a timing question. Director Brander's put forward, maybe. Logically wait until other work that probably. Mr. Cohen-Hobbin is is doing along with others. Might inform the further question, it'd be practical to have a. Uh, a separate service, but I tend to agree with, or I actually emphatically agree with Director Gisborne because. I've got my own lot six in my garage and so do a lot of other people, but it's pretty limited and to have availability for. You know, it's a resource uh. I also share other people's, you know, resources and. You know, it's what family used to do when I was a kid, we'd always scrounge from other people. Lot six is essentially, so I'm just thinking that timing might um. To, I don't want to discount Director Brander's suggestion.
So I have a possibility, Director Brander, would you consider making that a notice of motion? Be considered the next um. Committee of the whole, and that way there will be time for people to think about it, um rather than it's kind of. Something new like. I'm not opposed to getting information, but I'm opposed to adding to staff workload for something that I. Probably also would not support, because I don't think a separate service is the right answer, working within, working together is the right answer. Um, so would you consider this as a notice of?
How about if my motion is simply to ask if it's possible? Given the fact that we are responsible for solid waste management in the. We're actually mandated to take responsibility for it, if it's possible to have.
A separate service.
Service underneath that kind of umbrella.
Okay.
Might simplify the question to just that, so that's not a report.
Okay, all right, and as a secondary, I I would support that, so, okay? Discussion on, is that an amendment to the motion?
Well, I guess, you know, ask the corporate officer how it should be done, if I have to amend it or if I could just change the original.
Um, so. Separate brief report on possibility of.
Creating a separate service.
Creating a separate service for the metal transfer station.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be.
Everybody at the.
No, it was not what it would look like, just is it possible to do it?
Basically, it's just a phone call to say, is this, let this be done.
Oh, yes, yeah. That's possible.
Director Gisborne?
So it's still very similar to the original.
Well, no, it's not gonna, if I made through the chair, it wouldn't, it wouldn't involve costs or anything like that, it's just basically because it's a provincially mandated responsibility of the Q R D. Could a separate service be created for Texada and still follow provincial regulations, that's it.
So that is the motion that you made?
Yeah.
And that is the motion that I said. And that is the motion that I seconded? So further discussion on the motion. Seeing no hands. Director Gisborne, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, um, so this is more than say just like a phone call and saying, hey, could this, is this possible? It's like more, it's a bit more of like an actual report, right? Or is this just yes or no question? So do we even need a motion? Couldn't the director just call? C A O and say, is this possible?
Yeah.
Through the chair. I think everybody knows where it's going. We just formalize it and be done with it.
Anything further? Seeing no hands, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Here. So we're now going on to six point two and um. Uh, Jason, are you going to give another report to start us off here?
Number two is.
I'm also thinking you need a five minute break. For people willing, we'd like to find that bio break. Okay, so we will do that. Five minutes. Go quickly. Finish my发言. Good to go? Okay, well, welcome back to Committee of the Whole, everyone, and we are now on six point two. On the agenda. There's seventeen different regulations and I understand, Jason, you're gonna kick a thumb on this section with the presentation.
So this report is the second in the, the three part series, proposing updates to federal solid waste regulation and tipping fee by law. This report focuses on expanding for reuse and recycle programs that are delivered through the newly established Resource Recovery Center. And it is specific to the Resource Recovery Center because we must register each site individually. Uh, this report is seeking an order authorization to continue with those restrictions. Uh, both for extended producer responsibility programs, which are um, headed up by the province. And for the, the normal extended producer responsibility program that we can do locally just as uh, local reuse. Um, it also includes an updated schedule of reuse and recycled materials that we would like to include in the bylaw. And items that are prohibited from being in the waste stream. These additional programs are intended to enhance the local waste generation options. Reduce landfill volumes and align your R R C's design that comprehends the one stop drop with the actual site. Actual services offered on the site. Uh, I'll, I'll stop there. As usual, there are no questions.
Okay, thank you. So questions, Ron, Ron, Director Gisborne?
Okay, a very simple question. So we've got uh, sixteen proposed, no, sorry, fifteen proposed. Uh, recycling B C. Uh, or recycling programs. And my question is, if we said no to some of these. Um, we would essentially be having them going into the waste stream and then we'd have to pay for it, right?
Through the chair, that is correct.
So in that case, um, I'd be happy to move all of them as a block and so we could save some money. I don't see any reason to say no.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to put forward the seventeen recommendations as a block. Discussion on that resolution. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so I will call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? You're in favor, Director Garcia? Thank you. Okay, um, so that is carried unanimously. So that. Takes us to six point three. Did you have a presentation again, Flannan?
Thank you briefly, yes, through the chair. Uh, this third and final report for the solid waste regulations in the bylaw. Um, proposes a schedule of tipping fees for materials that will be accepted at. Q R D solid waste facilities. That includes Resource Recovery Center, Texas Metal Transfer Station and the Laskidi Island Collection Point at the Obrath. The proposed tipping fee structures we developed to ensure that the disposal of cycle costs are fairly and transparently recovered through user fees. Uh, this is a recommendation that also aligns with our solid waste management plan, which emphasizes a user pay or a computer pay type fee structure. The proposed fees illustrate, or sorry, the proposed fee structure includes weight base rates. Uh, minimum charges as well as per unit rates for specific items. Uh, where that makes sense, like a bag of garbage or mattress or tire. Fees have been calculated on the direct transportation and processing costs, which havers them over time. And as the board is aware, uh, we have seen drastic increases on our landfill on traffic passing. There is an opportunity here to reduce taxation with waste management service and staff are seeking direction on how much of the waste management service is off. Over and should be allocated to these tipping rates. Um, there's a lot of detail on this report, so um. Turn it over.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, um, I'm sure who I look at here. Uh, first of all, I wanna say big thank you for this report. Um, people have been asking. You know, a lot about how much does it cost to deal with various forms of waste? Organic waste is a big one that keeps coming up and people say, hey, it's free. You know, why, why is the regional district even considering having a tipping? It's free. Well, I tell people, it's not free. You either pay for it out of your front pocket, come and give it to us, or you pay for it out of your back pocket in your property taxes. It's not free. Um, and I really appreciate, uh, what is it, page? Uh, nine out of nineteen in this report, which breaks it down material by weight. And the base cost per ton, which as I understand is the cost. That costs us is simply to ship it from our facility. So my first question is, I see municipal solid waste is, the base cost is two hundred and fifty-two dollars a ton, which is household garbage and that goes to Washington State. Yeah, C and D, our cost is four hundred and ten dollars, but in the report it says it goes. To Roosevelt Regional Landfill, which is the same place as our household garbage. So I'm wondering. Why is C and D more expensive per ton than municipal solid waste per ton when they're all going to the same place on the same barge?
Through the chair. That is a lovely question, um, I'm not too. Historically, the regional district only been involved in M S W waste. Uh, this was, this was handled at um, a contractor's site. And uh, the private contractor, whether we had defined the materials. We did not involve ourselves in the C and D material. So uh, over the years, the regional district has been free to negotiate their own contracts uh, for transport on disposal. All private contractor has also done. Is a percent correct? Um, these materials do ride the same barge, the same train, and it up in the same hole in the ground in Washington. The distinction here that I, the thing that is potentially our greatest obstacle is that again. Legacy is that we only have our contracts set up for M S W. So this measure into C and E uh, is. In participation with the contractor that already comes to C and E and we are subject to their public rate. So that, I, I hope is the explanation why there is the cost disparity.
Yeah, that. Um, yeah, that answers that first question. Um, and then, so then when I looked down the list. Um, wood waste, two hundred and sixty dollars a ton, wood waste contaminated, three hundred and fifty-five. Um, and the thing that kind of makes me concerned is if we make household garbage one of the cheaper things. Then I think people are gonna start taking, uh, you know, other, other items. And kind of lumping them in with their household because it's kind of cheaper, even though our bylaws say, hey, if, if you have, you know. Something that's more expensive than the whole load can be charged with something that's more expensive. Of course, then the argument that people make is, well, it all goes to the same place, which is something I've been hearing. For at least the last ten years. So it's gonna be a challenge for us as a board to kind of come up with the right figures, but I, I do like. On page nine, there's kind of a range here. So municipal solid waste on the low end, two hundred and fifty-two dollars a ton. And then the high end, five hundred and eighty-two. There's kind of a recommended middle ground, I think, set up to our. Committee and board to establish where we wanna sit on that scale. But as is pointed out. In the report. None of this is free. It comes from either tipping fees or your property taxes. And like, we're not, we're not getting the states to pay for it, even though we should. Thank you, Chair. Those are my main points and.
Thank you, Director.
So I just got a little bit curious about the C and D situation. Um. So if people are bringing bags and they're getting their truck weight, it tear in and out. And they throw it all into the M S W, but it does contain some C and D. They're gonna get charged the M S W rate. Are we trying to change that? And currently, if you go there, they'll tell you we don't accept C and D. And so I'm assuming you're planning to accept C and D in the future. And if. Why wouldn't we just bundle it and send it through our own contracts as M, as M S W if it's all. Going and transported the same anyways? That, I'm just curious, what, what, why would, why do we need to handle it separately?
Through the chair. Landfill in Washington. Is is not. Distinguished between MSW. Actually, under the environment. C and D is MSW. This goes back to the way that we have to solve our operating contracts. Um for hauling MSW again in our legacy program. So we do have the option, if if we move into this material stream to negotiate. New hauling contracts and disposal contracts, either have C and D as a separate string or. Have it co-mangled. As is right now, it would violate our hauling agreements to mix those together.
So if I understand you correctly, our hauling agreements or contracts that are currently written. Distinguished, and so that's why we would do that. And those come up for renewal.
Through the chair.
So if we remove those languages out of those agreements, we would not have a need for these two streams?
Through the chair, uh a little more elaborated answer there. Um MSW tends to be very messy. Contaminated garbage that we can't work with. C and D is extremely large opportunity for waste diversion. So even if we were able to get those materials, we would still wanna start with them separated. Because we can hold uh the the metal for metal recycling, wood for either reuse or. Uh local shipping opportunities. Um many, many construction materials have another life. So I I would like to suggest, uh even if we could landfill them together, all of them together, we start with them separated. Do the diversion we can do and then. Mix them to meet a efficient transportation model. Uh again, there's. Many things that need to happen.
Okay, so last, so following your logic, the uh. A higher fee for the MSW would discourage people. From wanting to separate. Be better off to. Even though we want them separate at our, when we receive them, to not have separate rates for those. Or even a break for those that would come in clean and and have high potential for diversion. And so this is in contrast to trying to promote lots of diversion.
Through the chair. The other materials that were proposed here, uh so. The cool wood waste, contaminated wood waste and metal, these are all things that specifically could have been included in C and P. What we're trying to do is in the definition section, define C and D based. So that's the residual after. We, everything we can do to recycle these, violate that, okay, this actually needs to go to law. The the trick here is MSW is heavy and wet. And it's more efficient to transport, so our cost per ton is better. C and D tends to be light. It doesn't entzify. It's kinda like building Beaver Down. Where the load just isn't as heavy. And so our cost, where our contracts are written, it's the same cost to move a light container as a heavy container. And so I I fully understand how uh on paper here this looks a little backwards. Um the reason it's presented this way is because when you ship a container of MSW and C and D, it's the same price. But the C and D is lighter, so we divide the cost by the tons that just come out.
I'm not seeing any hands, so I guess I'll go on the speakers list and ask a question about the um. The tipping fees, the unit rates at the metal transfer station, um. Tires passenger on rim ten and commercial sixty five. I thought it was gonna be seven and fifty seven. Jason, did I not read in the report? Somewhere that it was gonna be seven and fifty seven?
Be whatever we want it to be.
The Texasa, um. The irony here is that the rims, of course, are accepted because they're metal, right? Um and tires are free anyway, so. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Through the chair, that that you are one hundred percent uh correct. The irony is. That the metal can be recycled for free, all rim tires can be recycled for free. I believe the seven and fifty seven you're referring to is uh that's our base cost. That is what um tire stewardship PC would charge us to remove those tires from the rims. So um. Yeah, what what we're suggesting is to uh a little bit more because there's also a transportation component. Just getting those tires from taxi to the recycling program.
Do they have to be separated before transport the tires from the rims?
Can you for a little please back up, but what we have is um. Tire stewardship PC. All tires that are off rim are in scope of the program. So a tire that's on a rim. Is is out of that program until it's removed. So we either pay somebody vocally to remove the tire, or we pay them to to ship those on rim. All the way down to the lower mainland where they. And and ultimately, we do pay. That's one way that the tire stewardship B P R program. Isn't free.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any hands. Um we, I don't believe we have a recommendation on the table, as you are. Director Garza?
Yeah, um I know we don't have a motion on the floor. The recommended motion in the package is. A list of numbers which are kind of like that midpoint on this list. Kinda wondering, like, do we want to insist on having a motion on the floor first, or do we wanna actually have a go around? And oh, we have a another hand up. So I'm just kinda curious, cuz I have some ideas on some different numbers. But I don't wanna throw a motion out before we have a table conversation about it first, cuz I think a motion is a solution to a problem.
Yeah, well, let's see if there's other questions first. So are there any other questions about this particular? Director Garcia, did you have a question? No, okay. Um I'm not seeing any hands, so I guess we are at the point now where um if. Someone would like to make a recommendation, um. That could be appropriate. What are you looking at?
Director, a little yellow hand there.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I thought you's um.
It was, it wasn't, you did ask me, but it wasn't a question. I was waiting until we're getting ready because. Uh we Laskians do have a problem with what's on the table, so I will be recommending an amendment. To what is in the portion around Laskiti. So whenever, however you wish to to do this, Madam Chair, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Um. Do you want a round of discussion before we have a motion on the table? So why don't we do that? We'll have a round of discussion, um and then consider motions after that. So who would like to speak, Director Garza?
Yeah, I I can jump in first. I I had similar concerns around the Laskiti Island. Uh differences and and part of having a solid waste management system is always her consistency. And sometimes it's good for consistency and sometimes it's not so good. Uh taking a look at the material by weight, which is the first. Um proposed motion of of weights. And I think when we get to minimum fees, I think they could then be based off of our established uh rate per ton. So it might be better for us to kinda determine our rates per ton. And when I take a look at the list, uh you know, municipal solid waste. Is uh costs us two hundred and fifty two dollars a ton, recommended is three fifty. We look at C and D is four ten and in my opinion, I think municipal solid waste should be the. Like the last option. When I'm working on the farm and we're we're splitting things up, I go, hey, what can we divert? And whatever's left over ends up in municipal solid waste. So in my opinion, I would like to see municipal solid waste to be the highest on that list. And then everything else, it starts getting cheaper and cheaper as you go down, so that way people are encouraged. So when they show up with all their stuff, they go, okay. I I parsed everything else out that I can to try and save as much money. Um so. Some numbers I looked at, I thought municipal solid waste, because C and D is four ten, is like that's the cost for us. Uh we see a municipal solid waste of four twenty, uh ten dollars more, uh contaminated wood, three eighty. Uh clean wood, three twenty, food and yard, uh two fifty, which is the same in here as the recommended. And then I also put yard at two twenty five, uh which is a little bit more than what's the the recommended. And then putting food at two hundred, which means that we would actually, um we would have to subsidize that a bit, but. My understanding is we wanna try and get food out of the municipal solid waste because that's a habit that we're trying to get people to do. Um I know that's still gonna make some people upset because they go, hey, you you should take our food waste for free. Well, it's not free. Uh at least this way, um we might be able to prioritize what things are most expensive, which I think should be municipal solid waste. And then going all the way down till food waste should be the cheapest thing to get rid of. And I think there's. Ways that we can create programs to make these things more cost effective in the future, uh such as our. Falling and transport and C and D and a lot of the diversion stuff, but that is down the road. We do have to deal with what's right now. So those are just some option or ideas that I'd like to throw out, but I wanna hear what everyone else has to say.
Thank you, Director Garza. Um other thoughts, other comments? Director Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh so. Again, going back to some of the previous comments about one size fits all and um we probably get the. Weirdest or oddest person or community out status on our little island. And all that to say that um using, there are two things. One is. The uh household waste per bag went up from five to seven fifty, which was already a thirty three percent increase. Increasing it to ten will almost double that. So we're actually wanting to keep it at seven fifty. The other part of that is the tipping fee. On the island, currently, we're doing it by the pickup truck load and people are being very good and very cooperative. About bringing their truckloads of stuff. If we institute these regulations on Laskiti Island. I fear, and I'm probably most certain, that's my inside voice. That we're going to find people are not going to use it, therefore there there's going to be probably a decrease in. Fees being collected because I I could see probably what's going to happen is things like illegal dumping and illegal. Burning and it just not getting done. And so that is my concern, so I would. Recommend uh as per persons on Laskiti that. We ask for Laskiti to have seven fifty a bag and to perhaps have an increase if we want, but keep. The truckload because I think it's going to be a failure over here to try to institute it the way it's articulated.
Okay, thanks. So I've got, um you know, you're considering, uh you're concerned that the fees are too high, um. Do you limit MSW to seven fifty a bag?
Yes, yes, I am, and. That we we keep the truckload option available for Laskiti as opposed to the tipping fees as outlined.
Really, I really like the concept of um encouraging separation, reuse, uh clean streams. Uh all of those things and a fee structure that supports that. Um. I have a similar worry here, as was expressed by Laskiti, that if um direct fees. Get too high, that we would um, you know, find people not using our system. And so um I'm wondering um if our tipping fees could be structured. In a way for encouraging the separation, but also if things are looking a little bit at. Expensive at the user point, that we we split it between taxation and and user point. Simply to encourage people to actually use the system for. Having to bring all your stuff to the Resource Recyclus Center is already our job. And if you get there and you can't afford to pay your bill, you drive away and throw your shit in garbage in the in the bush, right? And so um I just was, I I'm worried about that. I wanna make sure that our end. Fee that people pay isn't gonna be a deterrent to them using the system. So I don't know what the end, the answer.
Okay, so we've certainly had comments about um. Municipal solid waste is um, it should be much higher than C and D, um Laskiti, the issues about um. You know, the cost per bag and um not having a trucking option and. Also concerned everywhere that the fees. Should encourage separation, but also could be um discouraging you um the end user. So those are the thoughts on the table at this point. Um I see the recommendations before us. Are we going to, are you satisfied with the recommendations? Can they be? Amended to meet your satisfaction, or do we want staff to take this away and work on the issues? Raised at this discussion.
Um as this is the committee level and not the board level, so even if we pass it, um it it still has some more time. Uh I would like to actually propose uh some numbers based on some of the earlier conversations. Um and with a second, I'll I'll give a quick reason as to why. Some other things. I sent the numbers to our corporate officer.
Okay, I'll second it for, let's get the discussion going.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just read out the numbers for everyone. Uh proposing cost per ton, municipal solid waste, four hundred and twenty dollars. C and D, four hundred and ten, contaminated wood, three hundred and eighty, clean wood, three hundred and twenty. Food and yard contaminated together, two hundred and fifty, yard, two twenty five, and food, two hundred. Uh the reason I've kinda put these numbers forward is the cost of dealing with our solid waste of all these different forms is expensive. Um one of the nice things about having high tipping fees. Of course, the not nice thing is you get more illegal dumping and that's a big problem, but one of the good things is it gets a lot of people's attention. It gets people's. A lot of awareness. I know this community had a referendum about uh incineration back in the nineties. And then over time, it just kinda got pushed to the back burner and a lot of folks are just like, I take my garbage and it disappears. Well, then they turn around and go, why are my taxes going up so much? Well, these things have costs. Um I. Owe these numbers, but I would hopefully want to revisit these numbers in a year from now and hopefully we can get a solid waste management committee and go, hey. How can we find other sources and streams to get these numbers down? Because. Household solid waste doesn't cost us four hundred and twenty, but C and D does. And with all the good input from our manager of um. Resource Recovery Center, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Uh yes, if we're getting C and D and we're like, hey, thirty percent of it, we're able to reuse, well. Then we can actually go, okay, well, maybe we can drop the tipping fee of that a little bit and then adjust the municipal solid tipping fee down as well. And if we are able to get. Waste transfer and waste diversion and resource recovery centers costs down, then we can adjust, we can lower these, but in my opinion. This isn't the sole responsibility of the regional district. It's the responsibility of the full community. Like if the community, like I went and took a look at the resource recovery center and in the municipal solid waste pile, I saw a bale of hay still bound. And I was just like, I would be upset if that was in the organic diversion, but it's in municipal solid waste. And I'm like. There is a problem and it's not just the regional district's problem to solve, it's the whole communities. And yes, these are high numbers and I know people are gonna give me flack for it, for even putting them forward, but we need to get people. On board. on board. They go, hey, these these things have costs. And we could turn around and say, you know what? Tipping fee is free because some regional districts do that, but then it all comes out of your property taxes. These things have costs. And so I'm putting forward these numbers as kind of like an interim. Sure, we can kind of reconsider them and adjust them and jiggle them around a bit, uh, before any kind of final adoption, but this is just to kind of get that ball rolling.
Okay, the ball is rolling, Director.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I mean, when I look at the yard waste and the food waste, it's they've flip flopped in a sense that the food waste that is being suggested by Director Gisborne is actually cheaper than the yard waste. I I think I would like to have the yard waste be lower and the food waste be higher because of the fact that um, it is possible for people to get rid of food waste at home by using composters and gardening and stuff like that. Whereas oftentimes getting rid of yard waste, it isn't another viable option. So, um, I could see higher food waste, encouraging people to compost more. Whereas, yeah, like I said, if you take out a bush or a hedge or something, you don't have a lot of options. You just have to go take it to the dump, so. I mean, I would, I would be open to that amendment, just changing the food and the yard waste.
Thank you, um, Director South.
Thank you, Chair. I do support this because it, uh, it provides an incentive for those people who will be responsible, which I think is the great majority of, uh, the population. Um, I think the people who are likely to throw their garbage in the bush or whatever uh, dispose of it inappropriately, however that, uh, is will continue to do, does it regardless. Uh, I know even when there have been the, um, what do you call those days in in the spring when we do a big, oh, the trash bash. It's that's been a great incentive. And when, um, when it's added or when it was added to that, uh, day that people could put things out on their curb and then a whole bunch of stuff was collected. It appealed to me that people are, people do stockpile and that still uh, represents the desire to be responsible. Though perhaps opportunities like that could compensate for the cost, which is maybe seen as a disincentive, but I really have to believe that the only real way forward is by inspiring, um, um, responsibility and that this that cost structure that, uh, Director Gisborne has suggested really does help with that. It it encourages that, um, principle of that sort of value. So I do support this. And I'd be kind of fine either way as far as the yard and food, because I keep my food waste, but I do have to get rid of the yard waste because I don't have enough property to that's a big burn pile like you do some places.
Okay, thanks, Director South. And Director Garsette, then Director Elliot.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, um, that, uh, I myself as well, I think everybody, you know, where I live is in complete agreement with the fact that we need to hold one another responsible for our waste management and certainly on Laskidi, everyone composts. And people chip their trees and et cetera, and they they ultra compost. What has has been working and getting people more responsible because when people do live out in these really remote areas, they, um, and and I know you're not unaccustomed to that. There there is a tendency just to dig a hole and bury stuff that they having it the way it has been for our island that people could load up a pickup and bring it in, that has worked and has encouraged more legal disposal. And I want us to continue with that encouragement like everybody else does here. And that's why from our end, we're suggesting keeping the the truckload option available. And if we need to separate tires, et cetera, fine. I think probably forty dollars for a mattress from fifteen might be a little high. I agree they need to be dealt with, but I I've already seen it this year, with people just moving here, that they're burning them and not just fumes going into the sky. So I want it to be that happy medium that's workable for everyone. But those are my points.
I think I support this motion. And I also support this idea of, for some of the other motions that are upcoming, that maybe we have staff come back having listened to us, just because, um, they're not all the same. Um, but for this motion that we're, that is on the table now, the comment around the the difference between the yard and the food waste, it basically the food waste is something you want to keep out of everything else. It's heavy, it's, you know, whatever. And so having it cost less is an encouragement to keep your food out of everything else, out of your MSW, out of your, uh, you know, don't sneak it in with your yard waste kind of thing. Um, and so while you want to encourage people to, uh, get rid of their their guard waste properly, it it's not the environmentally most biggest issue, right? So with animals and everything, food is the bigger issue. And so I support the system that's in the current motion. And that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Um, we've had a lot of really interesting, um, dialogue around this table. There is a motion on the floor. And my, I guess I'm going to ask a question of staff regarding the motion on the floor. Um, what is your thought about the numbers as proposed versus the numbers that were in the, um, recommendation? If the, you have concerns about any of those and also about keeping the the truck option for, um, Laskidi and the question about who and and the cost for that. So can I get a comment from you, Jason, about those things?
Yeah, yes, through the chair. So, um, I I agree that the proposed structure would promote that, um, the diversion opportunity, so we would see, uh, the thing that we're trying to avoid, the the MSW, C and D, the land though, as the least nice option. It is within the range as presented and that's about as far as I can comment on that, because this is up to the board how we would like to manage your service. The truckload rate for the ski, um, I agree there is great efficiency to having the neighbors support each other. And it reduces the vehicles on the road, reduces emissions. There's lots of ripple effect, uh, that is positive. There was a comment about increasing the truck rate, um, which I would agree with because the old rate was based on just five bags of garbage and we definitely get one in five bags in one truck. So I I would like to know, um, Director Garsette, where you think that would be fair to land? That would help us just develop the next version of the bylaw.
I I would say, sorry, are you asking me to respond right now? I'm sorry, through the chair, I I beg your pardon. I was a little too, um, fast there.
Every friend, she's just waiting for you to recognize her. Director Garsette.
Yes, is it okay for me to respond?
Please do.
Thank you. Somewhere, it's thirty-seven fifty, I'd say somewhere between forty and forty-five. That's that'd be my guesstimate. I know that there's there's already a lot of pushback about ten dollars, they want to keep it at seven fifty for the bag. So I think scope creep is going to keep the buy-in. We've got it, we've got to keep it a got to keep it doable for people. And, um, each one of us in this room knows that the cost of living is going up exponentially for everyone and, um, it it's hard. It it really has become hard between increased taxes and, um, these extra fees for everyone in our community. So I would, I would say somewhere in that that range.
That help you, Jason?
Through the chair, you have to thank you.
So it'd be helpful to, um, it more helpful to have this to take away and and bring back some weak recommendations. Are you okay with what's here?
Through the chair, I I do owe you a, uh, just a response about rate for food, um, food waste. But as far as, um, process here, we will be bringing back another version of the bylaw. So I I believe I have enough information, uh, from this conversation to
Okay, and you've got the Laskidi information. So Directors, we do have a motion on the table. We can refer it back to staff, um, to bring back
I was going to refer this with the numbers in the motion to staff. If that's okay.
Definitely by Director Elliot, thank you.
Three, first, um, can I I just wanted to get some clarification. Are we referring the motion on the table and all the subsequent motions?
The motion on the table, which was directed um, is being referred back to staff. The added um, information was from Laskidi regarding the, um, the truck, keeping the truck option, but that it was part of the motion, it was just it'll all be referred back to staff.
If I may just interrupt.
Please.
Um, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be referred back to staff, but you can. But the last motion directs us to incorporate it into the bylaw. So that's what we would be doing once you guys made a decision on the rates. So if you do that here, we could present with that fairly complete bylaw.
But would you also want a motion regarding the Laskidi?
Yes, so
We want that as a separate motion.
Uh, he, that is, if we go through these, um, with the amendments that have been suggested, then that will have direction to do that. Okay, we'll be very clear.
In case I won't refer.
So is there any further discussion? And Director Garsette, we can get to the Laskidi motion once this one is resolved off the table. Um, so is there further discussion on this motion on the table? Seeing no hats, all in favor? Any opposed? Very generous. Okay, Director Garsette, did you want to move that, um, the, uh, the truck option, the maintain for Laskidi and the rate that you suggested?
Who are we on number five now, Chair? Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would like to recommend that we keep the bag rate at seven fifty and we keep the truckload option available at somewhere between forty and forty-five dollars per truckload.
I'm happy to second that. Discussion on that motion. Director Gisborne?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I guess my one question will be to our staff is, uh, if you do go this route, I'm sure we'll monitor it. And then when we go to reconsider, I believe the rates next year, we can then see if those rates are working in conjunction with our other rates. Seeing enough, good. I just, that's the answer to my question. Thank you, Chair.
Further discussion, Director Elliot?
Just to clarify, the the motion was, um, five, and in the recommended motion in five, it has a lot more items other than just a bag of MSW, uh, there's a lot of other stuff on there. Was it intended to leave all the other things in the motion and not change them and just change the bag and add in the truckload?
That wasn't my intention actually, because some of those things that are outlined would go in the truck. I think this may be something that needs to be clarified. I think we need to do what was talked about in terms of tires. Tires should be off the rims and separated because that's extra work for the, uh, Q R D. And, um, I would, I think the mattress and box springs are have gone up. They went up from fifteen dollars to forty. That's a huge increase. If they could be somewhere around twenty-five each, that would make more sense. Okay, um, I don't know what a bulky item is. I think that goes, that that sort of, some of these things are, um, they would be the part of the truckload, so they would no longer be part of this. And what we've done in the past is tires have been done on a separate pickup. So I'm not sure that 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 this works. They did a a completely different, um, barge run this last year for tires specifically. So we, ahead.
We're going to get a comment from staff, I think. On those points. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, so yes, these are new categories of materials, uh, firstly, the bulky item, um, little bit of context. So we are transporting waste by marine, uh, operation. And all of that material must be contained. So what we are trying to promote here is that everything that is brought is in a bag. So that we are not including the ocean during transport. All the items are things that cannot be broken down to fit in a bag. You can take it apart or disassemble or break it to fit in a bag. We are following the bag rate. If this was something like, uh, sofa chair uh, or a a large plastic playground for for kids, uh, that would be considered a bulk item. Those things still break down at the waste network facilities, which is why they are different than a mattress. Where, uh, a mattress is squishy and it just comes back. Uh, which is very inefficient for sure. So that's the distinction between bag, the bulky item, and then mattress box spring. Uh, again, if you can break your box spring down to fit in a bag, right? Uh, it is about transport efficiency. The tires, correct. That is a a separate run. We usually do it once a year. We set dedicated barge. Um, the most recent fire roundup we did did cost us several thousand dollars despite being part of tire stewardship program. So, uh, that is why we're proposing some kind of feature just to help make that break human as well. Uh, we would not want to see tires in a truckload. Not want to see tires in a bag. Uh, so still working on that principle of weight separation and recycling separation so that those don't accidentally go downhill either.
Okay, thanks. So, um, Director Garsette, do you want to hold that thought? And we're just going to get a couple more comments here.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chair. Just for clarification, I I I guess I assumed that having a truckload on Laskidi meant a truckload of MSW. Now it sounds like mattresses could be considered as part of a truckload, or at least that's what I'm understanding. And that I would like, I think I would prefer to have something like a mattress be separated out. Because I mean, if you show up with a truckload with five mattresses on it, that would normally cost you two hundred dollars and now you're getting a way with only paying forty bucks. I, that doesn't sound right because whatever whatever Laskidi saves, the everybody else picks up, you know.
Can I just respond to that? Sorry, Martin, mattresses were already separate and a separate fee. But they they, oh, they just weren't forty dollars each.
Okay, because it was mentioned that you said that mattresses, pardon my, through through the chair, mattresses were part of the truckload and that confused me. So mattresses would be considered as a separate item. They would not be part of the truckload.
Jason?
Through the chair, just going like Director Garsette said, um, yes, historically mattresses have been separate and charged separate and are encouraged not to contain.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, do we have a motion on the table now?
Uh, I think, yes. Uh, but I had previously thought that we were moving all of five with amendments. However, I think I need some clarification of where we're at.
Will we approve the changes that Director Gisborne has put forward?
Done. So we're on number five. I had, I had
Laskidi.
Seven fifty for the bag, uh, I didn't, uh, and it did add I didn't, uh and it adding a truckload from forty to forty-five dollars per unit. Um, and then I had all the other stuff as moved too, but I'm hearing that that might not have been the intention.
Well, mattress twenty-five, I've got.
Oh, yes, and sorry, I had mattress at twenty-five, although I will um just note that um uh I think it's proposed at twenty-eight per unit for um the rest of the regional district.
So with twenty-eight, the work, Director Garcia?
If that's what the rest of the area is paying, yeah, I I don't think that's a huge difference. I think that's fair, I know it's a horrible thing to get rid of. Why do we use them?
I have seen mattresses with the fabric stripped off and made into some amazing fences and gates that are high enough to be deer proof. Um, there are so many creative ways to use that stuff. Um, sorry, Director Brandon?
Uh, thanks Chair, I'm just looking at the Laskidi material unit fees, the base cost is over thirty dollars, so we'd actually be, I know it's only two bucks and it's probably not worth hassling over, but you know, we're actually losing money by having a set of twenty-eight dollars.
Okay.
It's costing us more than we're taking in to handle it.
Okay, so you're speaking against the twenty-eight dollars that you think it should?
I mean, I think if forty seems reasonable, but.
Okay, um and then the proposal came forward for twenty-five. So somewhere between twenty-five and forty is the magic number.
Do you shoot fifty?
So um why don't we split that difference um? Let's say how about thirty?
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty.
Thirty-two or?
Thirty-five bucks between thirty and forty.
And how about thirty, how about thirty-two?
I am sure, fine.
I'll I'll second thirty-two as an amendment.
Alright, so what we're doing is putting forward now recommendations number five to be included in the final version that comes forward.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so just so we're clear, what we're voting on, those are for seven fifty a bag. The bulky item would stay at twenty. Mattress at
thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty, okay.
I just said thirty-two.
Thirty-two, sorry. Uh thirty-two, uh truckload between fourteen, forty-five, did you guys wanna pick a number?
Why don't we just say forty? Okay. Because they've gone up quite a bit on what they were, where they were for mattresses, so maybe we can live with the forty. And yet what the other part of your motion was um uh tires are okay, five dollars per unit off rim?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. Um, did Jason, if I could ask Madam Chair, did what did people pay the last run? Could you advise me on that?
Jason?
Through the chair, there was no fee.
There's no fee.
Okay. Okay, that concerns me a little bit, I have run across people burning tires over here and it's awful um. Oof, I'm wondering if we could do it as a more graduated thing for this year and then up at the following year. So that it's not hitting people mentally as hard. And just I want, really wanna encourage people to recycle their tires, I know this is a pain in the butt for everybody else. But I I just don't wanna see extra dumping. Happy to hear your thoughts on that.
I'm gonna throw three dollars and see what other people think. I'm getting fine, Director Gisborne?
I I'm I'm fine with three, but I guess my question is for uh Jason. Uh, did we propose these increases, cause it's going from free even to three dollars is technically an infinite increase. Um, so I'm just wondering, could we when's our next tire pickup on Laskidi? Could we do it before these fees come into effect to just say, hey, I know some folks, you're gathering them all up in your yards. That was a plan to get rid of them before the fee comes in and then sometimes you might get a surge like that, I'm wondering what next pickup. Summers.
Jason? To call on half?
Through the chair, um, the last tire pickup was in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Um if we were to create this bylaw now, but it would, it will depend on when the fees become effective. Um, pardon my request is that we build a five-year bylaw with a five-year fee schedule. And so the, I guess one of the options would be to say this fee takes about ten years. And that might guarantee that we get the the result that you're looking for if you wanted to develop that fee.
Just a thought.
Okay, so um right now, the motion is on the table. Um, we can vote, we can change, we can do as you wish. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'll call for the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Harry Gennaros. Okay, so we're now on to number six?
Yeah, I think number two, three, or four.
Oh.
But it would be appropriate, I think.
Well.
We we could do them as a block, um it would be okay to do them as a block, um that would speed up.
Uh, Chair? Um, I was actually going to move two and three be referred to staff uh for the numbers based on the per ton. Because, for example, number two, MSW eight seventy-five is the minimum fee, but that's based on twenty-five kilos. Going through the adjustments on the previous motion where we set it to eight four twenty makes that number uh ten fifty. And I figured rather than us all here sitting doing a bunch of math, we could just say, you know, we've set the amount per ton, we can refer number two and three to staff and they can fill in those numbers in the appropriate amounts.
Or yes, or direct staff to adjust the numbers and include.
That sounds, that sounds.
Perfect, okay, Jason.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Chair, I just wanted to offer, I do have those numbers ready now.
Uh either way, uh we would put them into the bylaw. So.
Okay. So remind me please, what is, I'm I'm starting to get meeting fatigue, what what's on the table now?
So currently without a seconder, but uh Director Gisborne has proposed to direct staff to adjust the fees in number two and three to reflect the um the proper proportion of uh the fees adopted one, in one, uh and included in the bylaw.
Second now.
Alright, that's good. Discussion. Seeing no hands, all in favor? All in, Carrie. Say that, take care of two and three, it's just cool.
Next here, what do you wanna do?
I understand the part about taking tires off the rim, but it's actually the rim free, it's not the tires. Um, but anyway, uh I can live with that, so if some, I'll make the motion for number four.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Harry. Alright, so now we're on to number six. Um.
So moved.
Is it by Director Brandon, discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Vote? Number seven?
I moved.
Discussion? Seeing no hands? Any opposed? Harry Gennaros. There are no reports and no new business, we are on to question period. For anyone out there with questions for the committee?
Uh Golinski from the peak here.
Yes, I have a question.
Oh.
Head Paul?
Uh, thank you, a couple of questions, with regard to uh item six point one. There were two motions and I missed the first one uh because I had to uh move away from my computer. And I was wondering if the corporate officer could apprise me of uh what that motion was, I do have it recorded, I think, but uh uh if she could help, that would be very helpful.
Yes, uh through the chair. Thank you very much, it is going, it is quite long, I can uh, we'll have the minutes completed and they could be forwarded to you likely by tomorrow afternoon.
That would be wonderful, I thank the uh corporate officer for that. Uh, then uh I was asking a question about six point three, but a motion there, but it will also be included, so I will be able to uh pick it up as well, so I I thank you very much for the opportunity to post questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Well, um and we have one person in the room that has a question, and I understand, Tom Reed, you also have a question? Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Okay, alright, so I'm trying to do these in the order that I saw them, so gentleman in the room first, do you wanna begin with your name?
Uh Todd Phillips. Mine goes back to um six to number sixteen. This is just talking about um recommending that the staff participate in local reuse and recycling programs. Um, and I'm just wondering at the R R C all the refundable bottles that we put aside, and it's been a huge fundraiser for a couple of the organizations I belong to. That's no longer happening. Uh refundables, all the refundables are just going in and out with the general recycling. So I guess the question was, could we set up a drop box there? Like I thought Jason brings the plan, that we can still take those refundables out, ash them in. And I'm with however sour um Bill Soccer Club and with Special Olympics. And especially with Special Olympics, we used to get all the bottles from, that's one, that was our donation spot. So we were bringing in probably six to eight thousand a year, now gonna be gone off the table. So I was hoping kinda tell you what I planned. Was to put a trailer in there with a box on it, so people, when they come there with refundables, could just throw it into the into the trailer. Which means we'll have insurance on the trailer, which will give you liability on that, we just need a part in space. If I'm coming back and forth to move them, I have full liability, search and rescue fundraiser um covered under the liability policy of that issue. Takes that out of the question? So I, that was the question, it's just, I mean, kinda just abruptly happened a couple of weeks ago, they stopped doing it. Is there, you know, possibility we could hopefully for something else to continue this?
Good question, and we're gonna turn to staff and Jason?
Thank you through the chair, um a little more context, uh just that when little town center, Recycle Home Depot was operational, uh we had contracts with Sunshine Disposal to staff that depot. And the staff with Sunshine Disposal did uh do this function, they would collect refundables and forward them to Special Olympics and the other organizations. Uh, we had no idea how how many bottles or cans that would be. So when we started the depot at the R R C, we said, let's keep it going and see what happens. Um, it was a lot. It's 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 a uh almost unmanageable for the space we have, even though that R R C space is so big. Um, we went through this with our finance department. And there were some concerns that the amount of money that was uh reflected through all those donations. It it really became into a financial assistance. Um, should this go through a different avenue with the regional district, like a grant or some kind of agreement? And that's why we abruptly stopped, cause we went, this has hit the threshold where we need to do this properly. Um, one of the big hiccups was, is that the R R C was receiving the refundables and then passing them along. Um, in the situation that's being presented this would be folks directly donating to an organization. Um, and if it would, by having their own trailer, by having our hands off of it, we would just allow the space to recycle. Um I think we need to do a little bit more um due diligence, just to make sure this truly is onside. Uh, but what I can confirm is that this this definitely did happen, it definitely did stop and um we need to just kind of make sure we're following the right paths if we want to continue it. It's uh, I haven't seen how broad those are concerned.
Hmm, okay, I'm seeing a number of hands, so Director Gisborne first and Director Elliott?
Okay, um I saw uh Mr. Deveraux's hand.
So.
Just want to touch on on the contamination. Um, people donate cans but not necessarily the cleanest ones. People like it. So there was a risk with staff handling all that stuff with wet. Uh, we have the same thing happening in our parks, right? Um collect the all refundables, they're donated to different organizations. As is, they have to handle them because of the contamination. So having it at a staff's hands or the contractor's hands, the R R C into uh great organizations like Billup and uh though those uh things are flying, but it's puts a problem on our contract.
So in other words, the bottles etcetera could go into their, being that would be parked on the resource recovery center, and then our staff are not having to deal with them? And that makes you happy? You're good with that? But it sounds like they'd be good with that.
Through the chair, that's that's our best idea right now. We need to do a little more.
Okay, so that's already on your work plan then to do that research and we don't need a separate motion for that to happen? Or do we? That's my question.
Through the chair, actually, I'd like to ask our corporate officer, um if if she has any advice on this.
I I always prefer uh having two directions. Engaged, so without understanding all of the logistics, it may just be simpler.
I have a question, we're in the question period.
Yeah, we are.
It's not on the agenda, is this more appropriate to a future agenda?
It is, yes.
So Director Gisborne still has the floor.
Yeah.
Come on.
Uh, yeah, my my question, cause we had a question from a public, and it was really good question, cause it's related to item number sixteen that reads, and this is a motion that we pass, that the committee recommends to the board, the board directs staff to participate in other local reuse and recycling programs on an ad hoc basis, provided the programs are cost neutral. Now, what I'm hearing is if we get this trailer thing sorted out and that the they're handling all of it, then that could potentially be seen as cost neutral for our staff. And that is waste diversion, is in my opinion, so like my question was gonna be, I guess, an extension of of Mr. Phillips. Doesn't uh motion number sixteen, when it gets potentially adopted by the board, cover that direction and just say, hey, staff, like it's cost neutral? We'll have fun, or I guess our corporate officer might prefer a bit more.
I think.
Direction.
May I through the chair?
Yes.
I think what would be best is if we um just looked into it more before we adopt. We're we're going to adopt a lot of these motions at the board meeting. That will give us a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
One week, actually.
So I look forward to finding out more at our board meeting like next week.
So we are gonna get more information back and we don't need a separate motion for that. Okay, thank you for reading that, I think it's
I was on the list.
Director Elliott, you are next.
Um, so this is great information and great thoughts. Um one of the things I think we need to consider is um should we, should we try to facilitate these things and that works out well? If there are more than one organizations that would like access to the same opportunity, what happens then? And so I just wanna give that some thought as we're moving down this road. Um, that's all.
And there may have to be a protest. We're determining who that is, but we're not at that point at this time. So, thank you for bringing that question forward.
Wonderful, two hours waiting.
We're not quite done yet, uh Mr. Reed, thank you for your patience. Reed, Tom?
Um, yeah, I'm here, the um question I have is that, first of all, I wanna say that I'm I'm gratified by your discussion today, I think it's uh really productive and I'm encouraged that um we'll have a good solution for our island and for the whole region. Um, but my question is, it looks to me like the staff has some work to do to come up with um revisions to the bylaw that have to do with the content, particularly balancing the uh the idea of um of of consistency with community values. And I would like to see the wording and I would like my community to have a look at the wording of the revised bylaw before it gets adopted, so that And I would like to see the wording and I would like my community to have a look at the wording of the revised bylaw before it gets adopted, so that we can have input on that. So when can we, when can we see that revised bylaw?
At any time we see it, I guess.
Uh, published, would it go to next committee of the whole? Jones, or would it?
It will be published in July. Future. Uh, for. Board meeting. Bylaw will be referred to the board for consideration.
Is that for the June tenth meeting?
Uh, no. Of course. I would suspect the end of June or the first meeting of July. And we publish, uh. Typically on the Friday before the meeting, occasionally on the Thursdays.
That's.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's on the website.
Yep. That's, thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you very much. Anyone else out there with questions for the committee? Seeing no one or hearing from no one, um, we are now. Insured. We're doing camera session, that's it.
Ten minutes.
So we've got ten minutes till the next meeting.
Hi Shelley, you can just stay in the meeting.